Business tax receipt.
Okay.
Going away on our budget.
All right.
Do I have a pen?
No, I don't have one.
Okay, good morning. Thank you very much.
Get her a pen. Get her a pen.
I got one. The county attorney gave me one, thank you. I'm now gonna call to order our budget meeting for this morning. Let us stand for the invocation of the pledge and good morning.
Good morning. Let's pray. Father, we have gathered this morning to begin to discuss the budget for next year, Lord. And historically, we understand that the wants and needs usually exceed the income, which always makes budget discussion a little bit more difficult. So I lift up this day and ask that you help us to discover a groundwork that we can build upon in order to plan for that budget, Lord. So give us your wisdom, give us your grace as we discuss this very important issue, and help us to begin to look forward to next year. So when all is said and done, we will have used our finances wisely and we will protect and keep all of our folks safe, Lord. So we thank you for being with us today and relift up this meeting in your name. Amen.
Pledge and lead.
To reply from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every sin and justice for all.
Okay, can I have the roll call, please?
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District two, Commissioner Waiton.
Present.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
Here.
District five, Commissioner Mariano. And district three, Chairman Sert.
Present. No, here, sorry. Rubbing off on me.
I tried.
I'm resisting. Okay, so this morning, we're gonna talk about our fiscal year 2026 budget. And I will turn it over to the county administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I turn it over to Amy, I just want to say thank you to this board and thank you to the team. You know, in the past couple of years, we have really made great strides in providing unparalleled levels of transparency with the board and the public as it comes to how we build and set this budget. And so this workshop is another step in that process whereby there's a lot of work that's been going on in the past six, seven months in building what will be the fiscal year 26 budget and a number of challenges that I think Amy here will discuss with the board. We're really looking forward to this meeting in order to have your candid feedback on how we proceed next because our next step will be adopting a trim and then we'll head into the budget process in September. So I won't get too far ahead of my skis there for you, Ms. Amy, but I'll turn it over to our budget director, Amy Lee Farrell.
Good morning, Amy Farrell, Budget Director. So like Mike said, we are going to be talking about our, where we're at so far in providing a proposed budget to the board. So this morning, we're gonna talk about a high-level overview of the budget cycle and the process and what that looks like. So we'll talk about what we've accomplished so far in the cycle and what's still left to be done, what work the team and the board still has to do for this cycle. And when talking about where we're going, it's very helpful to put some perspective in where we've been, where we've come from. So we're gonna show some key data metrics that tell us the story about where we've come as a county. That way, we can set the stage for where we're headed. Then we're gonna get into the budget, the numbers. We're gonna talk about the different revenue assumptions that are built into the budget we're presenting today. We'll talk about those expense pressures that we're experiencing. And we do have preliminary taxable assessed value from the property appraiser. So we'll talk about those numbers and how that's impacting our budget. And then we're gonna have some key discussions with the board, talking about general fund, our different millage rates, and then taking a look at our five-year capital improvement program. All right, so what kind of work have we done already this year? Well, in January, we started with a strategic direction discussion with the board. And when we're looking at our five-year strategic plan, what are those things we should be focused on in this year? And then how do we help build a budget that's gonna align resources to move the needle on that strategic plan? And then we looked at revenues. Did I get louder? I feel like I got louder. It's okay. So then we looked at our major revenues and how those are looking like they're shaking out for this year. We had some key discussions around the Parks MSTU and how might that look for us moving forward? And then we met as a team internally and we started going through operating budgets and capital budgets and looking at the submitted requests and really kind of sharpening the pencil, if you will, on those requests to try to be as tight as we can with the limited resources that we're projecting to have coming in. And now we're back here before the board for a budget workshop to say, hey, we met in January. We heard you. We think we heard you. Here's where we're looking at now. Did we get it right? If so, yay. But also, what stuff do we need to kind of fine tune as we move forward before we get to TRIM, which is happening next month where we'll set the truth and millage? And then in September, we'll come back for two public hearings to adopt the budget for '26. It's a lot of work. We've done a lot of work, but there's still a lot of work left to go. All right, so let's talk about where we've come from. So this slide, we did show this. It looked a little bit different. We did work with our media team to try to gussy up our slides a little bit.
It's very pretty.
I know, they did a great job. Love them. But so the data's still the same from what we showed previously, but let's talk about it again. So since 2010, our population has grown by 42%, right? So we're showing some key years for you here. We've got 2010, 2020, and then 2024. And in that time, over that 14-year span, the population has grown by 42%. And so then we have a couple of metrics here that show you what has that growth in population meant in terms of demands for our service? So we're looking at single-family permits. Those have increased by 644%. Yes, that math is right. That's a large number, right? But workload's increased, people are coming in. We've seen a lot of new construction and building growth over the last 14 years. Tons of trash. And we look at this a little bit later when we start talking about key economic indicators and trying to predict where we think we might be headed. But our tons of trash has gone up by 31% in 14 years. And then we're looking at utility connections. So this is anywhere from homes getting put online. It could be commercial, but every time, we've had to set up new water connections. And so those have grown by 53% in 14 years. So and then we look at 911 calls. And so these are encompassing law enforcement plus fire rescue. And we have seen a jump of 137% in calls for service for law enforcement and our fire team. And so we've had to make some key decisions so as a county, we can support the growth that we've been seeing, right? And so, but from an operating budget standpoint, we have maintained very efficient and effective levels of funding because we've been able to handle so far the demands of service and they have far outpaced what our operating budget has grown because that's only grown by 30%. And so this board and previous boards have made some really tough key decisions to make sure that as a staff, we're working as effective and efficiently as possible to meet those demands for service while finding balance for our citizens and our businesses in terms of costs.
That's a great story, that one, all these.
And now, back in January, there was a piece of the puzzle that we didn't quite pull together for you yet. But we have it on this slide. So that shows what was our support from an operation standpoint. This shows how have we supported the growth in the county from an investment in our infrastructure? And so here, we're looking at, we've had eight new fire stations come online in that same 14-year timeframe. We've done five rehabilitated fire stations in that timeframe. We have, and so these aren't inclusive of all of the infrastructure investments that the county has made in the last 14 years. We've just brought some key ones, right? That might sound interesting or fascinating, but really kind of help us tell the story. So we've also had some new parks come online. We've got Starkey Ranch District Park, Wesley Chapel District Park, Wiregrass Sports Campus. And so here are some capacity road projects that have also come online in the last 14 years. We saw bridge road expansion, Sun Lake, State Road 54 and 56 widening, I-75 and Overpass interchange. We've also seen some investments into our library facilities, Starkey Ranch Library, Wesley Chapel Library, and Land O' Lakes and Regent Sea Park expansions. And then from a utility standpoint, we've seen the Boyett Road Reservoir come online. We've had the acquisition of FGUA and East Road Transfer Station expansion, just to name a few. Do you have any questions on this slide?
We, I was just mentioning to the county administrator, we should add the Clayton Avenue extension and the widening of 52.
Okay.
Parts of 52, anyway.
Team, you got that note, please? All right, so we have been meeting demands for service, demands for infrastructure, supporting a growing county. And we have done that by maintaining a level of affordability for our citizens and our businesses. And that's what this slide right here tells the story about. The first number we're looking at is our average total property tax millage rates. And so this is a ranking from 1 to 67 for the 67 counties, and we are at 28. We have lower property tax millage rates than Pinellas, Hillsborough, and the state average. And then when we look at the next graphic, that middle one, we're looking at our per capita county government property tax levies. So these are just county taxes. And we, again, are ranked lower than, it might seem counterintuitive because we're technically higher, but it means that our per capita county government property tax levies are lower, again, than Hillsborough, Pinellas, and the state average. And then when we look at our per capita taxable value, again, we are lower than Pinellas, Hillsborough, and the state average. So our board, over the years, has maintained lower millage rates even though they've had lower taxable values. And that really tells the story that we have been trying to push the needle as efficient and effectively as we possibly can over the years. All right, so if there's no questions, I'll continue on and start talking about our budget. All right, so before we get into numbers, let's talk about some of the assumptions that are underlying the numbers that we'll be looking at. So going into right now, we're assuming no change in our operating millage from what was adopted for FY '25. We're looking at no change in the fire MSTU, no change in the road rehabilitation MSTU. And also for '25, we adopted zero mills for the Parks MSTU. And we've been having a lot of discussion this cycle on the Parks MSTU. And so we hope to continue that discussion here today. And then there's no change in the stormwater assessment and our water and wastewater. So we have rate hearing scheduled for August. So we'll see how that plays out later this summer. And we are on track for our seventh year for our solid waste, seven-for-seven plan. And you'll remember that is to accumulate funds for the fourth burner at our waste-to-energy plant. All right, so that's the revenue side of the house. What are those expense pressures that we're also seeing at the same time? So we've got public, safety, staffing, and expenses. So this is sheriff growth. We've got jail expansion operations. Fiscal year '26 will be the first full year of our D-shift for fire rescue. We have Wesley Chapel Library coming online. That's fun news, right? We are looking at a wage increase for our team. We did a compensation and classification study last year. And so we certainly don't want to lose ground on the progress that we made on making sure that our team is paid fairly. And then there's also retirement rate increases and things like that that we've got baked into the budget. And we did get our next-year amount from Medicaid and what our contribution to that will be. So that's also baked into the budget that we'll be showing. And then we're gonna be talking about just general inflation and then sustaining our county facilities. All right, now before we get into the nitty-gritty of our budget numbers, let's look at some key economic indicators that kind of help us look and project and plan in the next five years, 10 years. And so tons of trash. The budget office looks at tons of trash. Well, why? Why might we look at tons of trash, you're asking? Because I'm not actually in the trash industry. Well, we look at that because it is tied very closely to the economy. And so consumer behavior drives our economy. And so if people are purchasing stuff, they are, in fact, creating trash. And so high amounts of trash indicates that we've got a pretty strong, stable economy. Now, if we start to see that ton of trash slipping a little bit, what we found fascinating enough is that there's a tight correlation with our taxable assessed value. And closely after that tons of trash starts to level out, we do start to see typically a decrease and a shifting of our taxable assessed values. And it works the same way. If tons of trash goes up, assessed values end up going up. Tons of trash starts to go down or level off. The same thing happens with our assessed values in pretty close proximity when you're talking from a time perspective. So that is one of those leading indicators that we look at to see how might the economy be shifting. Another thing we like to look at is how are our new home permits looking? And so here's our trend over time. And you'll see that they are leveling off. So we do still have some new construction happening, but it's leveling off. It's not at the high peak that we saw previously. All right, so new construction values. So this is how our permits shaking out. And then this looks at the value of those things that have come online. So our new construction, and you'll see that there's an ebb and flow to this. Now, back in the times of right before the recession, you'll see there's a really big, there's a high spike and then a big drop off. So what we're experiencing now is kind of similar, but not completely because it's a bit more controlled. We've learned some things, having gone through that recession as a country, as a state, as a county. And so what we're seeing is kind of more leveled stabilization where new construction is concerned. So we don't expect to maintain high levels of the boom we've been experiencing, but we also don't expect it to have that sharp drop off either. But I don't have a crystal ball. All right, so what does that mean in terms of total taxable value? So the past couple of slides we looked at, we were looking at the new construction piece of taxable assessed value. But there's a secondary component when we're talking about taxable assessed value, and that's revaluations of existing properties. And so there's a few things that can impact what those values are gonna shake out to be. One of those is, did I have land that's now, has a building on it? You could see a big jump in assessed value when that happens. Previous year, I was assessed on just the land. Now I'm being assessed on land plus building. Another thing that can trigger a high revaluation number is, have I sold a piece of property to somebody out of the state and they have no portability of homestead exemptions? And so you would see a big spike in revaluation numbers there. And we did experience a lot of that during and right post-COVID where we had a lot of people coming in from out of state. They did not have any portability. And so we saw big jumps in our revaluation numbers. And then the third bit of that is just normal growth in assessed value. And you'll remember, if we are homesteaded, then you're capped at 3% or the rate of inflation, whichever's higher. So if rate of inflation is higher than 3%, you get capped at 3%. If it's 2.1%, you'll be capped at that 2.1%, right? So if you'll, but if you're not homesteaded, then it's a 10% cap. All right. Amy, you just told us a whole bunch of stuff. Now, what does that mean? What does that mean in terms of how are assessed values shaking out? And what does that mean in terms of revenue? Well, our June 1 numbers from the property appraiser showed us 9.5% growth. And so what we thought might happen is what happened. When you break this out into the two components of new construction versus revaluation, our revaluation point was in between 3% and 4%. Last year, our revaluation number was between 7% and 8%. So we are seeing that cooling off in the market that we thought we were gonna see, which was why we came to the board earlier in the year and said, we're gonna be modeling 5%, 7%, and 9% because we are seeing that cooling off in the market. And it did actually, oh, I got it right this time. So but what does that mean in terms of revenue? So we're expecting to see roughly $37 million more in property tax revenue. And of that $37 million, the sheriff's allocation is $14.84 million. And then here, you can see the slight increase to our payments to CRAs at around $700,000. And then our increase to our different tax increment financing units is roughly $6.1 million. And so that leaves about $15 million coming back to the board in additional property tax revenue over last year. And then when we look at the fire MSTU, that equates to $10.7 million more in revenue. And then our road MSTU, that equates to $1.87 more in revenue. But that is just one piece of our very big and complex general fund. And so you all will remember, earlier in the year, we also talked about half-cent sales tax, our guaranteed entitlement. And while those are growing, those were not growing at the same rate that we had been experiencing. So that did apply a little bit of pressure and burden on the general fund as well. So big picture, 50,000-foot view, we're expecting if FY '25 plays out the way we think it'll play out, we're expecting to start the year with $97 million in fund balance. And then we're expecting to see $583 million in revenue, but $629 million coming out in expenses to include recurring plus one-time expenses for the year, which means we are presenting a budget where we are eating into our reserves a little bit this year. And so we'll have about $50.6 million in reserves, which equates to roughly 35 days of operating. We like to have 60. But we did have some, we had some storm impacts with the revenues not performing the way we were hoping. Right, this all kind of just came together in a, we'll call it a perfect storm, so to speak. And so this is kind of where things are shaking out right now.
Amy, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Does anyone else have a question at this point? Amy, on that ending fund balance and how we went to our reserves, the way we get paid by FEMA, I believe, is we spend it, then we get it back.
Yes. And so this is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's talk about that a little bit. So this is the first year that the county has gotten some money back in the same year that the storms have occurred. And really, the reason that we were able to draw some money down from FEMA had to do with the complexity and the magnitude of the impact. And so when I say complexity and magnitude, I'm gonna give you all some estimates, but just to give you some perspective in what that magnitude means in terms of impact and workload that our team is still experiencing to try to recoup more funding back from FEMA. So we've got this, from this storm season, we have 147 unique projects that we are requesting reimbursement from FEMA on. When we look at the past 15 years, we had 35 projects. And from this storm season, we had 147. That's, so when we talk about magnitude and impact, that's what we mean. That's, it was unlike we had experienced, right? And so we were able to draw some funds down. We drew down some funds for debris removal. So we were able to get half of what we were expecting. And we were able to put that back into our solid waste fund. So it was about $20-plus million we were able to draw down from FEMA and put back into our solid waste fund. We had some what's called forced account labor. So think manpower, people out there doing work overtime-related, that kinds of things. We got, I think it was about, don't hold me to it, but I think my team told me roughly $4-ish million that we were able to draw down in the same year. But we're not expecting to get the remaining for another two or three years because that does tend to be the typical timeline between documentation, having everything vetted through FEMA, through the state. It's typically a two-to-three-year timeframe before we start getting those funds back. For, to give you some idea, the team's working on stuff from Irma and Idalia as well.
So how much is that, that we're hoping to get back? And is that why our fund balance is lower than we want it to be? I mean, does that go back to fund balance?
That is part of, that is part of it.
I mean, also, part of it is the fact that our projections on revenues, such as half-cent sales tax, those revenues took a deep decline as well. I mean, so you're looking at probably half of that number alone is just due to declines in revenue from other sources. Couple that with maybe another 7 to 10 on top of that with reserves for storms. You know, it's why you have reserves, quite honestly.
That is why we have reserves.
35 is kind of shocking to me, 35 days. So I'm just hoping that we can build that back up with the, you know, how much are we expecting from FEMA? And how much does that bump us up to?
So.
I guess that's kind of my question.
Yeah, so we're pretty early in the game for me to give you an accurate estimate of what those cost projections are. We are right, there's still some projects that need some engineering inspections on there to help us figure out scope. And we're in the middle of some FEMA inspections right now. So we still, there's still some work to be done before I can really pull together a number that's accurate.
All right, well, we look forward to that number.
Yep.
Think it'll help our.
Yeah, as soon as, yeah, as soon as I can get you something that feels accurate, I will. I just don't want to give you a shot-in-the-dark number.
I'm just trying to remember when we've been down that low before. Because we normally want 60 days.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a few years. It's been a while since we've been that low. But that is part of why we have reserves. And so then, you know, it becomes a policy decision for us to make on how aggressively do we want to try to get back to that 60 days? And what does that look like?
Any other comments? Okay, thank you.
All right, so now when we're talking about your property tax dollars, where does that money go, right? And so these are just your ad valorem property taxes. So what we're looking at here does not include any CDDs one might pay. It really just is, it's not your stormwater assessments. This really just is property taxes. For every dollar of property taxes that the common citizen pays, where does that money go? And so one penny of every dollar goes to SWF MUD. One penny of every dollar goes to mosquito control. 38 cents of every dollar goes to the school board. So 40 cents for every dollar that the taxpayer pays is not under the purview of this board that's sitting with me today. But 60 cents of every dollar is. And so now let's talk about how that 60 cents is distributed throughout the county. And so this is based off fiscal year '25, right? So property taxes that people are now paying. So 2 cents of that 60 cents goes to maintaining our roads. And that's not the only revenue source that goes toward our road program, but for maintenance, that's your road MSTU. 21 cents goes to the sheriff. 20 cents goes to boardside public safety, so fire rescue corrections. 2 cents goes to our Parks Department. Our other constitutional officers, not including the sheriff, and our support of the Sixth Judicial Circuit, that equates to 4 cents on every dollar. Public services, so think senior services, libraries, your veteran services. So that's 3 cents of every dollar. 3 cents goes towards general obligation, bond, debt payments, and our contribution to our community redevelopment areas. And then 5 cents goes to our support services. So think about those services that are kind of behind the scenes, keeping the wheels moving but aren't necessarily public-facing. So our facilities management team, our information technology department, our administrative departments, right? So kind of all that behind the scenes. My department is lumped in there in a support service standpoint. Now, this graphic right here, ooh, this graphic right here that we just showed you, that county distribution of property taxes, that makes up that big slice of our overall general fund revenue. But in our general fund, there are other types of revenues as well. So the next biggest piece of the pie is that starting off fund balance number. That next bit of the pie is money that comes to us from the federal government and the state government. So think our half-cent sales tax, our guaranteed entitlement, those types of revenue sources. Then you'll see our charges for service. So this is where we are charging for a specific service that's coming back into the county. And that is a very small piece of our overall revenue stream because most of our services that are general-funded are free to our citizens. We don't really charge for a lot of our services. And then internal charges. So this one, we just wanted to give some transparency because there are some departments in our county who are supporting other departments. And so we try, to the best of our ability, to recoup funding to offset expenses to the taxpayer. So that way, our taxpayers are only paying for the services that they should be paying for. And so we do something called a cost allocation study where we do recoup some of the support from other funds like solid waste or water utility fund. And again, it's to make sure that our property taxes are really only paying for those things that they should be paying for. that they should be paying for. And then we've got some other revenues here. So in our miscellaneous, so that includes a big chunk of that. So roughly $6.5 million of that is where our fire rescue team is getting some public emergency medical transportation supplement to kind of offset because when you transport somebody who is under Medicaid coverage, you are capped at the amount that you can receive in that transport. And so this program helps us offset some of those costs and keep our fire rescue team moving. All right, so now let's talk about the other side of the equation, which is our expense side. So how are those expenses broken out? And so the biggest chunk of expenses in our general fund are around public safety to include the sheriff, corrections, fire rescue, emergency management, our 911 team. So they make up that other. And then that green part of the bar is our outward-facing departments. So that's our parks department, community services, libraries. The blue one is our general government. So again, think of those, like those support services that we saw that were 5 cents of every dollar that the taxpayer pays. So we've got our facilities department, IT, our different administrative departments. All right, and so back on this slide, we said that there was about $15 million in increased property taxes coming back to the board. But some of that is already accounted for. And so we are looking at, like I said earlier, trying to maintain the progress we made from fairly paying our team members so that way we can retain our high talent. So we are modeling a wage increase here. There's a state-mandated retirement increase that we also have that we're accounting for. We are still working through our phased-in approach of being able to expand, to operate our jail expansion when that whole project comes live. When we look at the other constitutional officers, not including the sheriff, that was about a $1.3 million increase. And we have some slides to talk about some of the pressures that they're feeling as well. So you can see why their budget requests are up a little bit from last year. It includes 10 additional sheriff deputies that the board is contributing over and above the 40% of the taxable assessed value increase. Operating our Wesley Chapel Library, which is, you'll remember, is going live this year. And we're in negotiations with our corrections union. And so there's some more to come there. We don't have a firm number because that's still underway. And we are in the process of working through, making sure that we really are putting our resources in the strategic plan where the board has told us these are priorities. And so the team's looking on bringing on a homeless program administrator to help us with some creative solutions to solving our homeless issues in the county. Any questions or thoughts before we move on to the next slide? All right, so here is our one-time capital fund, our capital, our general fund capital investments that the county administrator is proposing. So we're looking at the Hudson Library renovation. We think that the animal shelter, we're still waiting to see, but it looks like that might not be getting funded from the state. Yeah, so, but we have this placeholder in here just in case. But we'll, we'll see when everything gets through the governor.
So anything on the budget for the animal shelter? No?
Yep.
That's, that's a shame.
Yeah. And so in '25, we had design money for an armory for the sheriff. And so this year in the program is the construction bit for that armory. The next thing you see here is facilities budget requests. So investing $1 million into things like carpet replacement, reconfiguration of spaces, you know, to meet our department needs. 4.6 million into our facilities renewal and replacement program, where we're looking at maintaining roofs and HVAC units and things like that, trying to maintain the longevity of our buildings. 2.2 million invested into our facilities master plan. Roughly 1.6 million into IT projects and capital. And then 1.25 million into our parks non-capital maintenance and sod replacement. All right, so then our five-year lookout for our general fund capital, we've got everything you saw from the other slide. And so we build into our five-year plan maintaining our facilities, our IT. And we've got the parks non-capital maintenance and sod replacement built out for five years. And then we also are, we've got programmed in an FY '29 electronic poll books for the supervisor of elections. And then in FY '27, back when we got ARPA funding, there was a list of projects that the board had approved. And so we had a cash flow plan to fund all of those projects, even though it's not technically being funded with ARPA anymore. We do like to let you all know that those projects are still happening. Here's the year in which it is happening, and I believe this is the last one. And this was our economic bit of it, so our harbors redevelopment program. And then we had talked earlier about how we're seeing some general inflation applying some pressure. And so when we look at some of our general fund departments, this really just shows you what does that pressure look like. And so we are looking to be able to absorb some of that pressure by modestly increasing by roughly 5.3%, just normal operating budgets for our departments in the general fund without including any new initiatives. So just in order to be able to maintain the level of service that our citizens have come to expect from us, that is going, that is roughly a 5.3% increase in our operating budgets. That equates to almost $13 million more than last year's adopted number. All right, and so also within the general fund, we have what we call our outside funding contributions. Anything that you see here that is bold and italicized, our state mandates for us to fund. Anything that is not bold and italicized is we are contributing at the board's discretion. And so our biggest increase is that Medicaid number. We did get it, that did come to us from the state. So we are looking at 1.09 million increase over last year for that Medicaid. All right, so what else is in our general fund? Well, we've got our other constitutional officers. And just a reminder to the board of the timeline driven by state statute of when those budgets are due to us. And you'll be happy to know, they all made it on time. And the only one that we're left, that we haven't gotten yet, is the tax collector because that doesn't come to us until August 1st. All right, and so here's the high-level picture of our constitutional officer budget request and the change from FY '25 adopted. And then, like I said, we've got individual slides behind here so we can show you what are those details. All right, so we'll start with the clerk. And so some of the stuff on this slide is baked into the clerk's request, but the stuff at the bottom is not yet in there. You'll remember in April, when we did the workshop with our constitutional officers on the budget, the clerk let us know that there was a bill running through that might impact her workload. And so it's still, it's still out there, it's still viable. And if it gets signed by the governor, she will be requesting one additional FTE above the budget that she already submitted to us. And she's estimating that cost to be about $60,000. But what is baked into her request? And you can see it broken out between board services and then our multi-agency CGIS. She is requesting two new positions, cybersecurity and for documentation, a refresh of the audit software, which all this was discussed at the April workshop. And then those two buckets you see reflected in the board's side. And then the salary and retirement increases are across both of those, those operating units. And then the sheriff, so his, his number includes those 10 additional deputies that we are funding on his behalf, the 40% of new property tax revenue allocation. And in his budget submission, he did let us know that he's looking at 2.5% increase for salaries, benefits, self-insurance, and retirement. 1.37 million for contractual and equipment cost escalators. And then his capital purchase of 2.4 million. But this does actually represent a little more than half a million-dollar reduction from his '25 budget. And the supervisor of elections is increasing his budget submission by a little bit for vote-by-mail and sample ballot postage because '26 is an election year. The property appraisers includes a wage increase and some network switches and firewalls.
I noticed, I noticed the property appraiser has 5%. Is that, like, negotiable? I mean, no one else is doing 5%. Just throwing that out there. Have you talked with him?
We, I mean, we did have some initial conversations. They believe, you know, currently with what their employees are paid, that 5% is the right market.
What was he last year?
I think they matched with us. I don't recall last year.
I'll let you know.
Did the, I'm sorry, did the clerk have a... That's not me. I know. Was there a, did the clerk put in what she is talking about for salaries?
So I can say that the clerk historically tracks with us. So wherever we settle, they will have a, like, wage increase.
And I've asked the county administrator to get us a track of the constitutional officers' budgets from 2010 to today, just like we tracked ours.
All right, any further discussion? All right, so now let's talk about our ROAD Rehabilitation Services MSTU. So this is a new MSTU that was levied for the first time in fiscal year '25. So we wanted to bring back to the board how that program is executing and what the plan over the next three years looks like, assuming a stable military. All right, so this slide shows you dollars executed or encumbered. So expected, so in the works, expected to be fully expended by the end of the year. And we have it here broken out by treatment type. But if you look at the far bottom right, $14.1 million executed and expected to be executed by the end of the year in the ROAD program. So we asked Jason Mickel, can you execute this money if we give it to you? He said absolutely, and then he said, look, I did it.
Smart man.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Oakley.
Just a question or answer to that is the fact that citizens have appreciated we changing to that plan rather than the P-VAS we've had before. And I've gotten great remarks out in the public from people saying that's the right way to do it. And I think these are people that are naysayers to everything we do, seem like. But in fact, they think we did the right thing by changing to this system. So, and the work process of all that work and paving going on has been very accurate and moving forward and no problems because it's been used. I mean, the fact of it is, I think they'll end up spending that money a little quicker than, you know, it'd be short coming out to the end of the year. But the fact of it is, they've used that money and there's a lot of good comment out in our citizens for that. So I certainly appreciate all the work they've done in that and bringing that actually program forward to us so we can vote on it and actually move forward with a better program than we've had in years past. Thank you.
And may I ask Jason once more?
Well, what, where did we...
Well, I think we all do, but we've got to be able to get it somewhere, so.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't go with the Cadillac. But I don't think we went with the, I don't know, what's the lowest kind of car? I have no idea.
Go to Feds or something.
No, the board did...
The Renault RAC.
You're right, the board did adopt the mid-range plan.
And I know she can, Amy can get to the right number because we were going to have this budget meeting, so here we are having this workshop. And I said, I got to come up with a name for you. I said, I'm used to Budget Bob. So it all sounds good, so we got Accurate Amy. It's stuck.
I know, I'm okay with it, Accurate Amy. I can't think of a nickname that would speak to trust more than Accurate Amy. So I very much appreciate that. All right, so this is money spent, but what does that equate to in lane miles? Well, I'm so happy you asked because Amy has a slide for that. All right, so this shows you, broken out by treatment type and by district, what are the lane miles that the program has been able to execute this year in terms of rehabilitation? And so we said, we will give you money, but you need to go get work done. And the team met the charge and they got a tremendous amount of work done in the same year that they had to stand up the new program as well. So it is pretty remarkable to see. And so now we'll show you, so here's what they were able to accomplish in one year. So what's their plan over the next three years, assuming that they have a stable millage? All right, so here is by treatment type, what the team has programmed in from a fiscal standpoint over the next three years. And you will see that there is an additional treatment type here listed out that was not listed out in the previous slide. And that is sidewalks. So the team wanted to make sure that they were able to better and more accurately collect data and present data out on sidewalks as well. So for '26 and moving forward, we have broken that bit of the program out so we can be a little bit more transparent for you all. So that's what that looks like in terms of dollars. And now here's what those dollars look like if we break them out by district and treatment type. I'll just sit here for a couple seconds so people can take it all in. And then here's what that looks like in terms of planned lane miles by district. And so when we look at putting some context on this, this equates to about, by district, so District 1, looking at rehabilitating 15% of the total lane miles in the next three years. For District 2, that you're looking at roughly 21% of the total lane miles. For District 3, you're looking at roughly 25% of the total lane miles. For District 4, you're looking at 19% of the total lane miles. And then for District 5, you're looking at roughly 20% of total lane miles. All right. Good job, Jason. All right, so the next bit of discussion and conversation, yes?
So I'm on the county website, on the ROAD schedule. And the schedule's not here, and I thought we had that published. Where? Okay, but why wouldn't it not be on the paving page?
I'm not sure. I can send you a link when I get back.
We'll make sure it's clear.
Yeah, I think it's, it's got the prepaid paving assessment refund request and the paving assessment address change request. That's the only... Okay, great. Okay, we found it. It's still, it's kind of hard, even though I knew what else to... They'd make it a little easier.
Because the one you were looking at was designed for P-VAS and we're calling the new program ROAD Rehabilitation. And I think that's why they had two separate...
Maybe we can make that clear.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll try to transition and make clear. We'll talk to the comms team. Thank you.
All right. So, um, so again, everything that we've, for an example, everything we've got here planned with the roads, MSTU is assuming a level millage rate, right? No change in that millage rate. But part of what, um, the discussion we need to have with the board is, do we want to maintain millage rates? Do we want to adjust millage rates? Do, do we want to shift them? And so that's part of the conversation that we need to have today so that way when we come back in July, we're able to move in, um, in the direction you all would like us to move. So for some historical context, when we look at our general fund millage, um, we have where, where that sat over the last couple of years, we've got our fire MSTU and where that, um, millage rate, um, where those millage rates have set, our roads rehabilitation MSTU, again FY '25 was the first year that we had this MSTU. And then our parks capital maintenance MSTU, we adopted zero mills in '25. And so part of today's conversation is, you know, where do we think we might want to land going into '26? All right. So.
Amy, how much, uh, how much is going to change on the road in MSTU? I mean, with the values going up?
Right. So. So if we keep the same millage rate based off our June 1 number from the property appraiser, they're looking at getting roughly 1.87 million more in revenue.
And what will that equate to in road values for us paid?
Do we have a mic for her?
Yeah, we have a mic over here. Come hang out with us.
All right, so, um, kind of a weird spot. Yeah, all right. So Commissioner, if we, first of all, I just want to say again, thank you to the commission for supporting this program. You tasked us with, uh, executing and the team did. So I'm, you know, I give them all the credit. They, they did a great job of executing, understood, understood the mission, understood how important this was to everybody to get this done. And, and we, you know, we, they went out there and performed. So I, I know, um, you know, this, when it comes to more money, there's a lot of places that more money can go throughout the county and you have tough decisions to make.
Right.
So any dollar that we get more for this program, we are, we're going to be happy to execute on. You know, you saw the multiple strategies, including now the way Amy showed you with sidewalks. We, we will execute on the, with the money that's given to us. The, the treatments do cost a little bit, little bit, you know, different as, as you move down that list, they get more expensive, anywhere from $10,000 a mile all the way down to about a million bucks a mile. So it depends on what we do. Uh, we are doing a lot of milling and resurfacing throughout the county. As you, you'll see at your next meeting, we are going to be coming to you for our new rejuvenation and micro-surfacing contracts to, to do some of that work as well. And then we're also going to have two vendors for our, for our paving contract that, that you just saw. So we, uh, we're, we're ready to rock and roll on, on the, on the, the dollars that we've received.
So those, how many dollars, $10,000 do you have this past year?
I think what Amy showed you here is just over 14 million, I think it's 14.7.
So if you add what we have, that's almost 2 million more, right?
It's about 10%.
It's about 10% more. I know the citizens are very happy with the project and, and the way it's been built. To, uh, I'm sure we heard a little bit of that info early on when they got their bills for that. But the fact of it is, I think more people and citizens are real happy with the program and the way it's working. Uh, they're seeing roads being paved and, uh, very important for people. So word of mouth with a lot of people out there, so I, I think they're more than favorable. Maybe some kind of an increase, without a whole lot of increase, but, uh, we got to be careful because our money is tight. So it'd be good if we could add some money to that project so it can move further because all districts are getting some paving done and they've been needed to be done for a long time and been held up because they've gone through that P-VAS system where put neighbor against neighbor and it kept a lot of things from moving forward. So in this, in this sense, those roads that need it are getting done. So I appreciate everything y'all are doing.
All right. So, um, another MSTU that we need to have some dialogue around is the Parks MSTU, um, to assist us in understanding what direction we need to take as we come into the TRIM meeting next month. So we've been talking about three different possible scenarios, um, funding capital maintenance, funding their operations, or the combination of funding their operations and their maintenance through the MSTU. And the team did some work to update the ordinance so that way any version of these three scenarios would be allowable in that MSTU. And so here we're showing you, depending on what level that that would be set at, what is the impact to your median homeowner? And so looking at, uh, our current median value, that is roughly 178,000 is your median home value in the county. And then what that program revenue it would generate.
But just to add to, to what we need for parks and MSTU, we need something more than zero without a doubt.
Yes.
When I, when I came into office, uh, nine years ago, we actually were behind in maintenance on 20, I think for 20 years, we'd been behind like 20 million dollars and, and covering that. But Keith, I think, is coming forward or so.
I think his number was 8 million.
He can speak more to that, but the, the fact, the fact of it is, um, the fact of it is, it is very important that we take care of these parks. We don't let them get behind. During COVID was not necessarily a great time for the county, but it actually for parks, it helped them because parks actually got shut down to a point that they were able to take care of some of that past maintenance that hadn't been done before because they didn't have any player, anybody, you know, working on, on their fields. So they were able to do that in-house with, with a lot of their employees. Very important, very important to citizens that these fields were kept up. And I tell you, people are coming to play ball here in Pasco County in recreation. So I'll let, I'll let Keith talk to it. He can talk much better at it than I can. But the fact of it is, very, very important, we got other parks coming online, but we can't just keep going without maintenance fees to be able to take care of these parks. We got to have this money for that. And citizens want it. You shut down a park and see what happens in a neighborhood in Pasco County. They're screaming, hollering, be packing up our boardrooms with, with people against us for that. So we need to keep them going and do the right thing by, by keeping them up like they should be. Keith, you want to add to it?
I feel like I've said quite a, quite a lot over the last year and a half. I was watching Jason present and much respect for the success of that program. And I thought, God, I wish I was talking about the, you know, the success of that. And then I thought, then I was reminded by my fiscal manager that actually we, we have that success. We got the GOBON back in 2018 and we've been, you know, since the last six plus years, seven years, spending about 3.5 million on capital maintenance, executing maybe not as stellar.
That was a backlog.
Yeah, that was a backlog, but, but we did.
You didn't even make it through the whole backlog.
Correct. We didn't. But we did several projects and we met all the drawdown requirements. And we've been making those improvements to Commissioner Oakley's point throughout the county for the last six and a half years. So, you know, in summary, the, the Parks Department budget request for '26 is, is yeah, a solution to figure out this capital maintenance piece. We, we did our, we did our planning and we're asking for 8.2. But in addition to the capital maintenance side, we also have a budgetary request on the operational side of 1.1 and 1.5 million for the cost of goods, services, and contracts that have increased that as we continue to, in order to pay our utility bills, we take away from the capital funding in order to be, not have insufficient fund fees. So, I mean, that's high level summary. That's the, that's the Parks budget request for FY '26.
Yes.
Thank you. And so what's, what's coming before you now on this slide, and really we would like to have some, some more discussion on it, is Amy is outlining really a couple of options here before the board. So we have the tool, it's called the Parks MSTU, that the board adopted last year. It, it did not go forward. It went forward with a zero millage last year. That was for the Parks maintenance piece that Keith is talking about. And so if we were to establish, if the board were to establish a millage on that to fund parks maintenance, it's that one, it's that .1565 number that, that you're seeing there. That is not currently funded today through any, through any of our current budgetary processes. Right now, we're able to fund Keith's operations to about the tune of about 1.2, 1.3 million. Some of that handles sod and then some of it is also addressing backlog maintenance and other things. That's what we're able to, to afford with the way things are currently set up. So that would generate 8.2 million program revenue. When you see a general fund millage requirement, you notice that the general fund millage, it would be an increase, correct, Amy? If we were to try to fund that out of the general fund? So you're, and really you have two options there. Option one is you can increase the general fund millage and then we can find the money that way, or you direct us to go do it another way, in which case I'll have to cut from other programs in order to try to find, find the funding in that sweet spot. So Amy is just going to walk stepwise through those items. And really, one of the biggest decisions we need to know today is, you know, what millage, you know, if any, does the board wish to establish on the Parks MSTU? And how do we, how do we address that coming into the TRIM? Because it is a, it is a sequential function because once we eliminate that variable, then we figure out how to address any ripple effects that, that come from that. So Amy, why don't you continue to walk through this? And then when we get to the end, let's, let's try to have some discussion on it.
Right. So, um, to Mike's point, where, where we're trying to get to, it's, it's kind of twofold, right? What level of funding do we want to provide parks? And then what is the mechanism we'd like to use to get there? Um, and so both of those things give us a clear direction on how to move forward going into the July TRIM meeting. So are we looking to fund some additional capital maintenance at the full 8.2 million that Keith said he needs on an annual basis or some other version of that, right? A lesser amount, so anywhere from 1 to 8, what might that look like? And do we want to put that into an MSTU or do we want to find that funding somehow in the general fund? And so if we were to do the full 8.2 in an MSTU, um, so the, just know that the, don't hold too firm on the actual millage rates because that's assuming June 1 taxable assessed value, the millage rate would modulate a little bit. It's really that program revenue where we need to have the discussion because we'll get July 1 numbers. And then depending on what revenue you'd like to see generated would tell us what would that millage rate need to be. So don't pay too much attention to millage rate at this point, but it really is, so that, that program revenue piece. And so would we like to see 8.2 million generated, some other number? Do we want operations in there? Maybe not with capital maintenance yet. Maybe that's something we build out over the years if we were to establish an MSTU and let growth get us there? Or would we want to look at the, the whole picture in year one with ops and the maintenance money?
Yes.
Well, I'll jump in with both feet and make a big splash here. This isn't a secret. I would really prefer the capital maintenance and operations all in MSTU. But I'd want those mills cut. Obviously, they've moved from the general fund over into its own, so it'd be the, the difference pulled off the general fund revenue. And that, that solves a generational problem. Just funding the maintenance piece will ultimately lead to a potential increase on taxes. I think the restructuring of our current general operation millages is paramount here, using the money we have without potentially raising taxes to, you know, significantly fund the parks program in which it needs to be. Just funding the maintenance, the capital maintenance piece, I, I disagree with how that structure is last year, obviously. And I don't think that has the generational benefit to the park system based on money as a capital maintenance and operations piece because times, times get tough, you know, they're going to be the first ones to take the hit. So we backslide. This somewhat protects the budget for the Parks Department, they can keep moving forward and aren't just, you know, there's less distractions within volatile budget years, right? And Mike Waller and I have talked through this pretty heavily and we actually agree on something here on this. He might be able to talk to it more eloquently than, than I can, but I'm, I'm all for the all-in MSTU if there's, you know, we just pull those, those millages off the general operating millage and then let Keith and Kathy go to work and build the field of dreams that we're hoping to build here in Pasco County.
Commissioner Oakley.
I see the problem with doing that is you can't swap millage on general fund for, for MSTU money for the other because it hits every department, every constitutional takes a hit on that milit, on the general fund millage. So there's no way to actually do that, match it up and do that the right way without it hurting a lot of different departments. So Mike, if there's some happy medium somewhere that.
I can take a stab at that unless there's, there's other.
Take the clarity out and add comfort to.
So, so the way, I mean, there's, there's some, there's some structural things that, that really, in my opinion, should, should kind of, kind of play out here on this. So we've got, we've got the Parks MSTU and everyone's, no one's wrong here. Let me, let me just, let me just start by saying that. I think that there is merit in, in the, in the Parks budget being in its own separate, in its own separate thing, going, going down a path with growth and allowing organic growth to take care of the parks. It fences off that money and protects it. Commissioner Oakley, you are correct. When you make a reduction, a, a consequent reduction in the general fund, we'll just call it the general operating millage, that, when you change that multiplier, you have, you do have less revenue. There is less revenue available for other departments that, you know, and you've seen before, that would, that would, that could impact public safety, that could impact other general operating departments. Now, there could be an order of operations because one of the things that we have been trying to look at this as, is we've been trying to look at the budget holistically. And if, when we look at it holistically, and while it, it's not ready to be baked perhaps in, in this year's budget, but we've, we've had discussions kind of loosely on, on look, what, what, what does it look like if law enforcement, for example, were in its own MSTU? Or what does it look like if we were to take the rescue component of the fire department and put it in its own, in its own MSTU? And when you start projecting out the numbers, they, they look, they look better, quite honestly, because the public safety expenses, let's face it, they, they creep up higher because there is, it is a demand that our citizens require, right? They, they, they need adequate police, fire, and rescue services, and that's, that's cornerstone of infrastructure for growth. Next biggest thing they like are parks and they like roads. I mean, this is, this is back, this is backed with data. So I, I, I think all of these, all of these ideas have merit. I just, I, I do think that the order in which we take them up, you know, could, could matter if, if the board is, is committed to doing it. So I think the end state of these being in their own separate taxing units provides the transparency that I think the board and the public demand and look for. I do think that the order in which we tackle them could, could matter somewhat. So for example, if we were to, you know, as you point out, you know, Commissioner Oakley, if we were to adopt a Parks MSTU and we were to cut the general operating millage this year, that's, that's going to create some challenges in terms of us having to fund other budgets. Now, you give me that direction, our, our job is, is to figure out how to make that, how to make that work if that's the direction of this board. It'll, it'll be, it'll be tough, but, but I'm not saying that it's insurmountable. But then that would be predicated on, on, you know, next year, probably making some decisions on, well, let's, let's get these law enforcement MSTUs or, or a fire rescue MSTU on the books because if those don't get into the books, then you could have, you know, other problems in your general operating millage. So some of that isn't, isn't completely baked right now, but it is certainly a path forward over the next two years that I think the board, the board could take that would really stabilize some of the reserve problems that, that we've seen. Get parks, get sheriff, get fire rescue in, in their own, in their own aligned buckets. The question, the question before you today is, you know, you know, do you want to tackle this one first or do you want to take on, take on the other ones first? There, there's some order, there's some order that matters, but even if you were to take this up and direct us, we would, we would try to figure out how to make it, how to make it work. And there may be short-term, short-term pain for long-term gain on that, or, you know, we can handle it a different way. The issue with the MSTU. The issue with the MSTUs, as you all know, is I, I need, not me, excuse me, we, the, the law requires that we have unanimous consent to establish a millage on those. And so if the board is not united in that at this time, then we need to come back with other plans. I, I just need to know that.
Well, I know we need the maintenance fee for the parks, I know that's there. And I know we always seem to have an issue with the amount sheriff gets at times, but we know we need some money for our safety and security and things in the county. I see, I see us needing this park thing, but I don't want to cut millage and cut other departments at the same time. But the fact of it is, a tax is a tax, whether it be in, in the general fund or if it's over here in an MSTU. But I can, I can almost see, as you were speaking, the fact that there probably could be a plan, maybe not this year, that we take and make the sheriff have his own MSTU and also for the others that, for the property parade, what if monies he gets, elections, all of them could be on their MSTU and take, drop that bill. So a tax is a tax, one way or the other. But you can't take it away from the general fund without maybe doing all of it at the same time. Because if you do all of them at the same time, they all pretty much kind of stay whole. And, and they're the same tax you're putting out. So maybe there's a way to do that. I, I think there might be, but that's something for accurate Amy to take care of and, and the staff, your staff, Mike, so. But I can see where, a picture of that would be better than when we tweaked millage to do that before. It really had, had a bad effect.
Lisa's next.
On other people and other departments, so I was concerned about that.
Lisa.
Okay. So when I talk to Mike and Amy, I, I just in good conscience can't, can't vote for a tax. I feel like we can't tax our citizens. And I asked for a plan, what does that look like coming out of the general fund? Or, you know, did you happen to come up with anything?
So there are some, there are some paths forward, and depending on the level that the board would like to see funded from the general fund would help us. So like, I'll call it low hanging fruit, but if we're not getting any state money for the animal shelter, that could peel off some money if we wanted to keep some maintenance money. But, so we can look at some of those one-time investments that we're planning to make, peel some of those back little by little and shift those over to parks capital maintenance.
I'm saying if we, if we have, if we funded parks maintenance like we did last year or this year, so you're saying if.
We didn't fund.
Well, we funded about 1.3 million in terms of maintenance.
Right. I mean, I want our parks to be great. I just, like I said to you guys a million times, I feel like we can't tax our, our citizens right now. So where else can we get money? And I'm not for cutting the millage because then our first responders are our first hit. So, so like I said, I was hoping we had something for this meeting where I could see if possibly we could take.
I, I.
We need, yeah, we would need the, to really be able to come up with a good plan for you all, we would need to know what's the funding level you all would like to see? And then that helps us really identify a couple approaches to get there. Right, so, so if we're looking at, let's say, in, in a scenario, there's no Parks MSTU and we're looking to fund some capital maintenance dollars out of the general fund based off current millage rate and the status of the universe as it exists today. Knowing, would we want to increase it by 1 million or 5 million would help us know what different options we could provide to the board to get there.
Let me, let me, let me jump in here, just, just a second here. So Commissioner Jaeger, to answer, to answer your question, if, if the board adopted a zero millage for the parks, but said, hey, what do we, what do we do with parks, right? So the recommendation would, would probably be to bring forward Keith's budget as, as currently slated right now, with a recommendation on what level of parks maintenance the board would like to see. And so to answer that question, I, I did have some conversations with Keith and Kathy on, Keith, what do you think you could realistically execute without having to bolster up, right? So that 8.2 million that he requested does include some staffing ups, some ramping up in order to have the capacity to spend those dollars. So looking at it relatively conservatively at this point, we, we think somewhere between 3 and 4 million is where parks could probably realistically, under their current structure, realistically execute without having to do, to do anything else. So, you know, if the board, if the board, let's say the board were to say, hey, look, you know what, we, we want to, you know, to address Commissioner Oakley's concerns, you know, maybe it's, look, if we, if we did not adopt that this year and we wanted to move towards, look, let's, let's take care of the, the public safety component and parks and get those things aligned all at once. Because we've, we've got some order of operations here is really, really what the issue is saying, what, 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 sorry, I was about to say Colonel Oakley. What, what Commissioner, field promotion, sir, it sounds good, got a good ring to it, right? What, what, what Commissioner Oakley is, is kind of led, led to concern because if, if we were to cut the general millage, then yes, this year, then you would see some cuts. Now, or reductions in, in recurring revenue that would probably have to be made up out of reserves or other, other sources until next year. If we could get a law enforcement MSTU and then an update to the fire MSTU put forward, and then parks, and you take them all, you take them all at once, then you can probably do that without a whole lot of hubbub within, within the general fund. So, but Commissioner, to answer your question, if, if there was zero, if it was set at zero and that's, that's, that's where we landed, we would probably recommend to fund, fund Keith's budget where it needed to be, and then just ask the board for some guidance on what you would like to see. If that number is 3 million, great, he's getting about 1.2 million right now currently from general fund. You know, Amy made a very quick, you know, look, yeah, we could take that money from the animal shelter, we didn't get money this year for it. You know, live to fight another day, that would certainly be a quick, a quick fix. That's where we would look. We would look, we would look to unspent capital dollars to kind of make, make those first moves and cuts. So it, it can be done, Commissioner. He would just have to temper what the program would look like to, to fit within that. It's kind of like what we said with paving, right? We recognize that, quite honestly, we could do a lot of roads, or we could do some roads, but doing some was better than doing no roads. And so it's the same when it comes to the park maintenance. Doing, doing a little bit more than what we're currently doing is a great thing, and it is a win for parks, and we would, we would take that happily.
Okay, so.
I hope that answers your question.
I, I'm going to disagree that, I feel we have a responsibility to maintain our parks, and Keith's been limping along with pretty much nothing for quite a number of years.
Yep.
I look at where we are in affordability. I think our residents, I think our residents want our parks. I think, I mean, they are screaming for that Little League park in Bexley. They are, look at what's happening over at VO, Connected City and VOPH, they want their parks. So I, I am 100% in fully funding Keith's request, which I think is a conservative request. And, and if we're not going to fund maintenance, we shouldn't be bringing on any of these parks. Because we cannot build a park and then not take care of it. Drive by Mitchell Field and take a look at it. Drive along the Sun Coast and look at the wooden rail along the side on the Sun Coast Trail. It's falling apart. There's gaps in it, and it's, that's, that's the, that's the presentation of our county when people are coming through from other counties south. You drive through Hernando, the Sun Coast Trail looks lovely, and you get to Pasco, it's falling apart. I mean, it, it's obvious there's a lack of maintenance going on. So I think that we should be funding at a minimum his 8 million dollars of maintenance. And I think if we put it to the public, they would fund it. They would want to fund it, so.
So if I could ask, ask on that, I mean, again, there's, there's options to do that. So, you know, right now, we are not funding that in, in your current general operating millage. You know, is, does the board want to consider, and don't, don't throw tomatoes at me, you know, an increase in the general millage in order to cover that? Or do we want to take that from other sources or other programs or reserves?
Who are you going to cut it from? We're already, you're already operating much lower than any other county per capita.
I'm just offering that question to the board.
I think we're already to the bone. And so we, you know, we, we have a responsibility to fund government. And Commissioner Oakley wants to speak, so I'm not willing to cut sheriff or the fire department or any other program. I think that we're already at minimum. So I, I was for the MSTU. I don't mind, I don't mind his idea of putting the whole parks budget, budget over in an MSTU, as long as it includes the 8 million dollars. I mean, and that's got to be a little bit of an increase. So Commissioner Oakley.
I guarantee if we put this up on a referendum to vote for the, for the people and citizens of Pasco County to vote, I guarantee they would pass that hands down. There's, I mean, we just added another park. We bought the land for another park at Two Rivers. And it's, it's a good thing and it's coming. And I spoke yesterday at Two Rivers for their groundbreaking of landing of Two Rivers. Very good turnout of people there and all, and they're doing a great job. A good open space, got landscaping, got, got trees diameter wise, probably five, five inch trees are putting in. I mean, they're, these are huge oak trees going to be coming in there. They got their bay heads and other things. Very open, very large lots in there. It's, it's a very nice project, so. But they've got a new park coming. Somebody's got to take care of it. It's our park. We bought the land to put the park there. So that park's going to be called Bob Thomas.
Oh, really?
Bob Thomas Memorial Park.
Was Robert there?
At Two Rivers. No, Robert wasn't there. It's not on the park today, on yesterday. That was setting up for the new development itself. But the park could come later, that we'll be presenting that and having, I'm sure we'll have a groundbreaking for that, so. There's a lot of good things, but there's, people are wanting, every time we start a new season of, whether it be soccer or baseball or whatever, I get a phone call. Oh, I don't get enough time on the fields. I haven't got enough, we don't have enough fields. There's, and there's almost not enough time in the day to put them on there. But the fact of it is, when you got so much play and so many people demanding to have park space, it costs money to keep it up. And if we don't give money to the parks to do it, then shame on us. We're not doing the right thing for our citizens.
And, and I want.
The citizens won't.
I, I agree. But I want to remind you all that now that I'm an older person and I don't play softball and soccer anymore, I want parks for me too. I want wonderful trails to go walk on or bike on or shaded trees to have a picnic under. I mean, we, we need to think of all generations when we talk about our parks, so. And we don't have Commissioner Mariano here to weigh in on anything.
I just have a comment. I mean, I feel like some of this, you know, was created because, you know, just take, take the cap. We weren't taxing all these, these big companies coming in and our, our firehouses weren't being funded all the way because, because of that tax money. And now it's like, okay, now we, we've taken the cap off or about take the cap off and now.
You're talking about the impact fees?
Yeah, for these, for these big, huge companies coming in. So I, I just feel like, I, I love parks. I mean, I have kids, I love parks, I want beautiful parks. You go to other counties, we have beautiful parks. I just, I, I hate having that fall on the citizens, that's all. I hate having a tax. I, I really wish somehow we could figure it out for the next couple of years. I mean, I'm not hearing that from anybody else. I'm not for cutting the millage. I want nice parks. I, I just feel like this is just, this is just something that's kind of happened because of maybe some poor decisions in the past.
Well, you know, what hap, what happened in the past was this county got stuck in the early 2000s when they rolled and rolled and rolled the millions back. And, you know, we've always been a conservative county. They rolled it very far back and then Save Our Homes came in and it's taken decades to recover from that. So, but I think going back to the slide that Amy had up before, which shows you where we sit as far as taxing our citizens in the state. We are a very, very low tax county, but we can't stay at the bottom and provide services. And we can't stay at the bottom and fund our sheriff's office the way we want to. We, it's, and no one wants to raise the tax. I personally think MSTUs are a great way to go because you know exactly where that money's going. It's dedicated and we could tell our citizens, that penny, that dollar, what is it, $44 a year for? How much is 8 million a year on an MSTU per?
$111 on the paper.
It's $25 a year? What is it? Because you've got 44 a year.
That's operation and maintenance.
No, I, I think it's just capital maintenance is $44 a year, is that right?
Yeah, right, I'm talking about the whole thing, that was $111.
But if you just look at trying to get Keith whole, if we take the operations and the other out and we move it over, that's just a, there's no difference in just, you're just putting it in a different pot. Which I'm, I'm fine with that, but we have to add maintenance money.
It's in it, it would be in. Your chair man.
Yeah, uh, okay. Waitman and then Commissioner Oakley.
So Commissioner Jaeger, I agree with you, believe me.
Yeah, no.
I had no problem before you came on, holding the board till 10 o'clock at night as a freshman commissioner, as chief remembers and his, his troops storming out and boxing MSTUs and taxes. So I appreciate it 100% agree with you. And the reason I didn't support the maintenance tax last year is because, like you, if I'm going to support a tax, it's going to have to be a true generational benefit to our county citizens. And we all know our county has grown younger by 20 years since COVID. And so my thought process was with the all encompassing park MSTU, the .6235 mills, we would pull that off the general fund millage. So essentially reducing the general fund millage, .6235, move that over into its own, so it's, it's unilateral, there's no tax increase. And if we needed to, there's no secret, I'm all for spending down reserves. If the county has money, we spend it because it's the only business in the world that will have a boatload of revenue coming in the following year. So I'm not afraid of spending down our reserve money, especially if we're to cover the $8 million shortfall for the 12 months and then he's back, Keith's whole and he's growing. And then what that does is there's no net tax increase to the people. And it's the same principle for the sheriff and what the fire guys are doing. The fires are an extra, but with what, with the, with the potential public safety MSTU. And then it protects that budget, that budget's blown out of control, but that fund is growing at a healthy rate. We can reduce that millage rate and cut it back. But essentially then if, if we're, you know, say three mills, it's, it's essentially, it's a, it's a tax reduction. If we do the maintenance tax, that's a tax that would be over and above our courage millage. So it would be, that would, in my opinion, would be a tax increase. It wouldn't be net neutral. And so that's why I'm, I'm such an advocate for the all-in park tax. If we pull that full millage rate off the general fund millage and move it over.
Hands over body.
And then Keith can go to work. Well, Mike Carbala, in speaking with him, was fully comfortable with this plan, and he still had flexibility within his budget to figure out the wiggle room of what people need. Again, that's where the reserves come into play. I'm comfortable spending those reserves down. That's why the taxpayers give us the money is to, to spend it and use it, not hold it in a savings account, in my opinion. And I, I think, I think that's, that's the healthy way to go. Keith's team can be off and running, the residents, I think, would appreciate it. And it's just, again, it's just, you, we, we live 12 months at a time here, right? And if something doesn't predict as accurate Amy says, which I think it would be pretty accurate, then we come in hopefully next year, it's, and, and work together and tweak it to make it right because the demand is clearly there for this. And, and this restructuring, the generational impact, I think it will have for our residents and our park system. I don't even know how to, how to measure it. But I think if we were to support the all-in plan and then balance the budget the way that we need to, I, I just, 10, 20 years down the line, I think this board could look, look back and go, wow, we, we really did the right thing restructuring our budget. Because this budget, we're kind of managing it, in my opinion, the same way as it's been done for a long, long time. And so I looked at our budget and say, how can we restructure it and make that dollar go further? And by moving, you know, dollar for dollar into its own MSTU, Keith's budget will go further. The same thing for public safety MSTU, which the sheriff has endorsed, again, pull those millage rates. Again, pull those millage rates, and the sheriff supports this, pull that millage for his own MSTU, take that millage, pull it off the general operating millage rate, no tax increase, his budget's protected. He can go to work. The sheriff's not distracted from the politics of a budget. He can focus on sheriffing. I think also it'd be a tool that when the sheriff retires, it would help be a recruitment tool for a new sheriff to come in because they would be comfortable with the budget structure and not necessarily be just, you know, have to focus on the politics around his or her budget when that time comes. It's like, hey, we have a board that supports us, supports our funding mechanism, and also gives the opportunity again, if that fund is growing at a healthy rate, sheriff could come in and bless, hey, you can reduce my millage. I have all I need and it'd be a tax reduction. And so it's just restructuring pieces of the pie, in my opinion. And I think these are the, the generational changes, good impacts that we can make with, with restructuring our budget for generations to come by doing this without increasing our taxes.
Okay, Commissioner Oakley?
Okay. If we took the millage or took the millage for the MSTU, a medium hole and take parks out of our general fund, is there a way? And if we're going to reduce some millage on, on the general fund to make each person, like the sheriff's department, whole and be able to still do that pulling out that MSTU, sounds to me like there's going to be a little bit of a, a tax increase over on the maintenance part. But my real concerns, when you drop in millage rate, my concern is making those whole that are left in the general fund. So, so they're not left holding a bag of, like that one tweet we made before, thinking that was going to be a good deal. It took six hundred thousand away from the sheriff's office and that's a lot of money. So.
And it takes away forever. Before you answer, I, I want to add on, kind of add on to what you're saying. And, and I, I like Keith's budget growing organically for himself. But I want to get him some more money. No one likes raising taxes. So I want to throw out some ideas. If we started to do that, I'd be okay with that. If we got Keith some more money this year. So I hate to see that animal services money go away, but maybe that's an option. But I also know that maybe we could make a pledge here that, you know, the money that, don't tell me you programmed it already, the money that, um,
We programmed it all.
That Senator Fasano, you know, what he bring, gives to us, sometimes we get some money back, we give it to Keith. If we, if we do come in over nine point five or whatever we're at, you know, and, and we have some extra money there, he gets a big portion of it. And let's build up his kitty for this year so he's not starting at zero.
Mike and I did talk about that, like any extra revenue we have, you know what I'm saying, we throw towards parks.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll address that and then I'll address Commissioner Oakley's thing. So with, with regards to, we do do revenue projections on, on what tax collector gives back to us. Now, sometimes those, sometimes he brings in more than what those projections show. So if, if we have a projection, let's just say, we've projected, I don't know, do you know offhand what we projected for this year?
Not offhand, but Dan can pull it up.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna give a fake number right now. Let's say that number's two and a half million dollars. If, if we projected a, a, that coming back, am I close?
Four and a half.
Oh, we projected four and a half?
Woo! Thank Keith, you're rich.
No, not really, not really. Quite the opposite, actually.
No, it's already accounted for.
So we've accounted for four and a half million from the tax.
Oh, in the budget already?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's from all.
So if, if the tax collector were to come back with, say, five million or four point six million, I, I would understand that to mean, take that extra hundred thousand, half a million, and we, we plow it into parks through a budget amendment or something like that. Understood, understood. Just know that we, we set a number and if it's over that number, then yeah, of course. Otherwise, we're building into these other budget assumptions. So back to Commissioner Oakley's, Commissioner Oakley's point. So Commissioner Oakley's point, and I think we saw it, we saw it the first year when we talked about the, when we made the haircut on the, on the general operating millage and, and that, that pain was spread equally. Yes, the sheriff's budget was impacted by six hundred thousand. So if.
But that wasn't fair. That was done so quickly. That was done.
What do you mean? We were there until ten at night.
No, 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 no. The cocktail napkin math and Gila moment, it was late, people retired, my fault.
All right, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not using it to point blank. I'm just saying it's, it's, it's just a factual, mathematic thing that, that happens.
We didn't have that, it got serious come game day and I think now we know, hey, this could potentially happen. And so it's healthy to have that conversation now where that scenario, that conversation never happened.
Right.
It was quick draw McGraw. And so that was a learning lesson and we were able to fix it. Senator Fasano came in and we rang the bell for him and we fixed it. But now we're able to have these great conversations and dialogue of how we spend the people's money and plan on these real scenarios that we know can potentially happen. So that's, to use that as a, as, as a prime example, I think that'd be a little bit.
Sorry, I was just feeding off of what, what Commissioner Oakley had mentioned in his statement. The, the, the simple fact is, is when there is a reduction in the general operating millage, there is. Amy, can you please go to the, the slide where you show? Dan, would you please go to the slide that shows the revenue, where it shows the new revenue slide?
But again, Mike, if we were to understand the commercial side's coming on, this could help us make the decision.
Let me, I'll touch on that in a second because Commissioner Jaeger sort of alluded to the same thing. Wrong way, Dan.
Parks are priority.
Can you give a little bit more context, please?
Uh, your revenue slide that shows new revenue, thirty-seven million, whatever the number was. Keep going there. That's it. Okay. So I think Commissioner Oakley, this is the point you're trying to make here, is that if, if we were, if the board were to adopt a parks MSTU and some sort of commensurate cut in the general fund, whether it's dollar for dollar or some other number, your net increase in property tax number will change because your multiplier is different. So your millage is currently at seven four two nine two, around there. Originally, you'll remember, two years ago was at seven six seven. And we, it was, that was, it's been reduced two years in a row.
Good work, team.
But, and, and so to that, and so to that point, your net increase in property taxes, that number will be some number lower than thirty-seven million. Based on how we currently allocate money, those other numbers would also change in the downward direction. So the question is, is if we do make a reduction, how do you make up for those numbers? Commissioner Waitman here has suggested spend it out of reserves. That, that's a policy decision on, on what we, what we want our reserve levels to be. I don't, you know, and we've, we've seen, we've seen the need for reserves as a result of the hurricanes, you know. I, I won't get into that discussion. We've, we, you gotta, you just, you just gotta be, gotta be careful. It's a calculated risk. The, and so, and then that number of what's available to BCC and the fund constitutionals also drops. And so you're looking at, next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. You've got these numbers, no, that's fine, go back. You know, these are, these are kind of these other, other expenses and pressures that are out there that would rely on that fifteen million dollars that, that would, that would decrease, right? And so it, it becomes a, you know, it becomes, it's a policy decision on how to, how to fund and how to set, how to set those numbers. So one of the things early on that, that we were talking about, and I, I look at this now through, through the lens of, you know, Commissioner Waitman and having discussions with all of the board members, even in the sheriff being supportive of an MSTU, is if we take care of our big rocks, go back two slides. No, I'm sorry. It was just, go forward one. And that's that public safety component, which is their biggest drawl out of that. You know, right now, we're focused on an MSTU that hand, that, that really kind of operates in that green area. We're talking about MSTUs that operate in that purple area. If we're going to be looking at cutting general operating millage and, and coming up with new ways to transparently fund different programs, my advice is focus on the purple area first. You get the purple area taken care of, that provides you maneuver space to handle the green areas, possibly even other areas, depending on how this board wants to go. We haven't established those yet, but I think, you know, again, if we begin with the end in mind, you certainly can tackle the green area first. But then there would have to be some alignment on this board's part to really be committed to addressing the purple areas next year. Otherwise, you could find yourself in some, some fiscal straits.
And what does that mean? What does that mean exactly?
What, what I'm saying is, is perhaps you should look at adopting a law enforcement MSTU and a rescue MSTU perhaps first and then, and then work your way into parks. But I, but go ahead.
But then how would Keith get his maintenance money?
We would, we would have to stopgap his funding this year. It would either be status quo or this board can, can direct me, look, I, I can take some, if you want to tell me, give Keith four million dollars to do deferred parks maintenance and the additional one and a half that he needs for the operations, I, we, we will, even if we have to cancel the animal project or one-time capital projects or pull from reserves, that's your policy decision. We can make that work for this year.
Mike, to be, to be accurate, I think, I think staff started with parks as a dipping their toe in the water to see how this MSTU funding, way of funding departments would work.
Correct.
It was less bold than jumping all in, I think, on a public safety MSTU. Would you say that's?
I, I would, I would say that, I would say that's accurate. Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, look, I'm for transformative changes with this budget and transformative changes in how we fund certain departments and key departments. I don't like having to give forty percent of all new revenue to any department. It handcuffs this board whether they want to choose to reduce millage rate. It, it, or how we want to structure different departments and how we fund them. To have a handshake agreement of, okay, we have the forty percent of all new revenue year after year. I, I just, to be bound like that, I, I don't, I don't like what it does. I think it, it eliminates or inhibits creative thinking on how we structure our budget to, to do better for our county with the dollars that we have. And I think through the parks discussion, I think that's what's led, Chase, I think you agree, led to the sheriff's saying, oh, this is, this could really work for us. And it would take the distraction of us and sheriff and the forty percent and yada, yada, yada that's gone on for years and years and years and many other between boards and sheriffs around the state. It would take that distraction out. That's moved over. It's doing its thing. It allows the sheriff to, department to go and do what it needs to do. And then allows us to really focus on the money that we truly have and how we want to break up that piece of the pie. I feel like the forty percent really handcuffs this board in how we want to, to fund, whether it be roads or parks or, or whatever. So, I mean, I'm, I'm all for these big transformational changes to our budget, as long as it's, you know, we're cutting, you know, millage rate per millage rate, moving, moving from A to B. And then, you know, seeing, seeing how it looks, looks from there. And we have, again, we have the reserves. I'm not afraid to spend them. We have a big reimbursement coming. We live twelve months at a time. There's more money coming in the next year. The public, we take the money from the public and they expect us to spend their money. So, hey, that's what we're here for. There's no department in here that's not asking for more and more money, right? Right, Mike? So let's, let's spend it and give, give the folks what they're, what they're wanting. If, if the board wants to tackle public safety MSTU, heck, I'm, I'm all for willing to have that, that conversation and move forward and pausing Keith. But, I mean, I'm, I'm, that's kind of my thoughts and feelings on this matter. So. Wish Japp was here.
Well, I think Amy's got a lot on her plate, is what I think.
Well, what does it take to get to a net, you know, you know, I've been advocating for an MSTU for the sheriff for a long time. I'm glad to see he's there now, apparently. But have we missed deadlines to set that up for this year?
Yes.
Yes, we've missed.
For this year, yes.
Yeah, so we can't do that.
But we can vote in the policy.
But we could bring, we could bring items back with regards to fire, with regards to law enforcement, and you can adopt that. And then it would show up on next year's, uh, next year's trim. And, you know, you can set a millage then.
I mean, we know three quarters of the battle is, is getting the policy passing the ordinance. That's, that's a hurdle, but I think there seems to be an alignment there. At least we could set the policy. And if it's set at zero, that's fine. But the policy is set.
But you can adopt the ordinance by three votes. You can, you have to establish the millage by five.
Yeah, I was going to argue on your three quarter argument there.
No, but you can't, you can't, you can't set a millage without having the ordinance passed.
That's true.
That's step one.
That is correct.
That's, that's truly the process. So.
But I don't know that it's the most difficult hurdle, is the point.
He was arguing your three quarters of the battle.
I can be the battle. You want to sit next to me, Jeff?
Commissioner Oakley, do you have any thoughts on pausing and doing the purple MSTUs first? I, I see the logic in what the county administrator's saying because those are critical.
I think we've actually started the conversation we needed to have. And I think going forward with that will, will be great. I think we need to do the best we can for parks this year.
Agreed.
And then, then set a plan that we work out so we're not down to the wire and said, oh, we've got to do this and this, and it not work out right. I'd like to see numbers from Amy accurate.
Yeah, no surprises on budget night.
Come up with those numbers and how those scenarios should look.
Yes, ma'am.
And give us a better way. Intelligent decision with good information backing is, is the best route to go. Not just haphazardly do something, then it not be really what we want to do. But you don't want to hurt any department.
Kathy, then me.
Sure, I just got a question. So Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Administrator of Public Services. So I, I just want to ask a question so I fully understand. So if we pause the MSTU for parks this year, we fund them a certain amount of money, that's a one-shot deal and we're back at the same boat, asking again next year? That's what I'm asking?
Well, that's what, that's what I'm about to talk about. So.
That's what I'm thinking too.
If, if we're, if we're gonna do, say, the law enforcement MSTU and, and you wanted to add a fire MSTU?
I would like to add, I would like to modify the fire to include rescue. Rescue is not in there.
So those are, those are the same numbers just pulled out into their own silo, right? So why can't we do all of them at the same time? We don't have to pause for parks for a year, do we?
So part of the problem is, is, well, this is, this is, this is what county attorney talks about, the challenge.
Not problem.
The challenge because, you know, for example, if, if we were to, and this is what Commissioner Oakley has pointed out as well, if we establish a millage that we want, you are in, in effect, raising taxes unless you make a commensurate cut somewhere else. What I'm saying is, is that by making, and by making that cut in general operating, you will adversely affect other areas of the operation, you know, which, which would include other, you know, public safety libraries, other, other pieces of the puzzle. That's why I, I recommend tackling the purple area first because those are your largest expenses that come out of your general revenue, truthfully. There are also, as Commissioner Waitman pointed out, you've, you've got some, some, some rules that you've put in place and, and deals, you know, that, that's sort of complicated. They make it less simple. And so by simplifying those parts, Commissioner, you can, you can more directly address, you know, parks, you know, in terms of an MSTU and get there. And so what, what I think I'm hearing the board say is, look, we can stopgap parks this year and then we tackle all three MSTUs next year in a way that, that gets structured with no adverse impact to the taxpayer.
Right. I like that. The benefit to the taxpayer is transformative and generational, I think, if we do this.
Well, there's, you know, there's, there's impacts to everything we do.
But I'll remind, I'll remind the board too that we, we, that's, that is, again, to establish a millage is, is always a unanimous vote. I'm not sensing unanimity here on, on a parks MSTU this year necessarily, but I am, I am sensing broader support for bringing forward, you know, perhaps later this year, a couple MSTUs and, you know, change to that one. And then looking at it as the budget process, kind of building our budget around structuring these, transformatively here, these, these, these three new taxing units and then making the adjustments within our general government. Because it's our, our public safety expenses increase at a much, much faster rate than, than probably our general government expenses do anyway, notwithstanding parks.
So if we're going to just set up the ordinance policies potentially, so we would have another standard budget year is what I'm hearing you say. So if, if that's the case, if we're not, if we're going to potentially stay status quo, then that gives this board the ability because money's compounding, then I'd want to see in a, a reduction down in the general operating millage for this year.
So I would say the only challenge to that, the only challenge to that would be that in order to fund portions of parks, we'd either need to find the money from other programs or withdraw from reserves. That's a policy decision. But I, I know where you sit on it. I don't know where the rest of the board sits.
The problem with that is that it just don't match up.
Yeah, you, you can't do that. I mean.
I'm not for lowering the millage. I'm, I think if we keep it status quo and try and find as much money for parks as we can this year. I mean, I'm not a fan of dipping into reserves, but for a one. I mean, I'm not a fan of dipping into reserves, but for a one-time, um, to help Keith get where he needs to be. And if we don't fund the animal services, you know, if we're just taking money and saying, hey, you know what, parks is a priority to this board. I support that. I mean, I, I, I want to have the best, I, I want to have the best parks. And I'm also for, you know, next year, looking at the sheriff's office having its own MSTU and, and parks as well.
Well, I'll be advocating for a reduction in general operating millage. So I hope Accurate, Amy and others can help find a way to reduce taxes.
From which department do you want to cut it from?
Well, that's what.
What service do you want to cut?
What service?
We're already twenty-eight, we're already forty-second.
So there's over half a million dollars of pork spending that's listed in this, just so you know. It's, it's going to be, it's a probably an uncomfortable conversation, but there's five hundred thousand dollars there. And there's other areas at which we can modify and, and do it. And I think that if that's the direction that we'll go, it gives Mike and Amy the opportunity to look a little further and bring something back for us and, you know, ask, ask, you know, we all comb through it and when we have another discussion and see what we may or may not want to do.
Commissioner Oakley.
Problem I have tonight is, is we're pretty flat budget, so. And I think all our departments, according to Mike, have, have come back with very good budget restraints on themselves, bringing forward to, uh, be pretty flat this year. Uh, I appreciate them all doing that because the money's going to be very tight this year. Cutting back millage, I, I can't do that because I don't want to give up any services for my citizens.
Yeah, we're already.
And I don't think they'll want to give up services either. And to do that, that's what you're doing.
And I, just to piggyback on that.
Everything's getting more, inflation's involved here and everything's getting more expensive. We're still way lower in tax, property taxes in our county than we are in neighboring counties.
Most of the state, especially.
And pretty much, oh, yeah, most of the state.
Florida's incredibly expensive and there's only so many twenty-dollar hamburgers people can buy. So if we're going to stay status quo, I think it's incumbent upon us and staff to figure out how to reduce millage for people, if there's a way to do it. Because just because it stays flat, their values are going to go up. It's going to pay three percent or commercial properties are going to go up ten percent and they're going to pass that on to the consumer. So if there's any ability to hold that down a hair, that's the, that's, I think it's incumbent upon us and our obligation to try to find some level of relief for our businesses and our property owners.
Our businesses are going to get some relief this year because of the business tax receipts that they won't be collecting. They are, they are seeing some relief. And I think.
Oh, I want to say something.
Yeah, go.
No, I, I think if we just refer to the pie when we talk about, um, reducing the millage, I mean, our first responders are going to be the ones taking the hit off of that and, and feeling that. And we're a growing county. We're just talking about our growth. Like, how do we expect them to do their job if we're saying, hey, you need to do your job with more people and less money? That, that's how I look at that.
But you're, you're assuming we're cutting their budgets. That's not the conversation that we're having.
Well, then who?
But you're saying you're cut, you want to cut the millage.
Yeah, when we find, yes.
If they're forty percent of our budget or more, then how do you think they're not affected?
That means we look at the other.
Cut the road paving program? Cut?
Again, if this is where we're going.
Whose department here do you want to cut?
Well, there's parks, there's libraries.
Oh, we're going to cut parks and libraries?
But this, again.
Oh, my God.
This goes back to my point of the parks MSTU.
You can, you can take them out in your district, but man, my, my district's slant, begging for parks.
So this goes back, this goes back to the parks MSTU and how that fund compounds. So when we have difficult conversations like this, you see what happened automatically? This is my whole rationale behind the parks MSTU, behind the sheriff's MSTU, is when we start having conversations like this, it's like, oh, it's automatically go to the low-hanging fruit. But he's in his own silo, he's kind of exited from the conversation.
I didn't feel exited there, though.
But you see what happened?
I'm like, he's trying to cut him.
But all these other guys are going, oh, oh, you're going to cut our budgets. So, if we narrow, narrow the pie chart there to, you can, you want to reduce the millage, then, and you're not taking that out of the purple and you're not taking it out of the green.
Well, that's not the direction I thought we were going today, for now.
Well, you're saying you want to reduce, you know, I don't, I don't want to have one of those board meetings where we're, we're there till two in the morning.
Well, we wouldn't on the general, on the, we, this, in the regular way, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to pack lunches.
I'm, I'm bringing my magazine and my snack, just to be prepared. Okay, what, you know, we don't have Commissioner Mariano here.
I know, that's kind of not fair.
But listen, we all philosophically, this is a very conservative thing, we, we get it. That's why we are ranked where we are. And I think we, our staff works incredibly hard. And our, our departments, I think, work harder than any other county in the state to provide the level of service we do for the amount of money we, we receive. And it's, it's shown that we're a great county to live in and we're cheap as heck. So, I feel, I feel our citizens are getting a great return on their investment. And we are very, very mindful of any, every penny we take in. So, the only place I see where there's some pork, sorry, Mike.
Ouch.
Is that, not you, Mike, the other guy. Is, we're all, you know, you're doing two and a half percent rate wage increases and there's this discussion there for five. And I think, I think we all need to be around two point five. And I don't know what that means in his office, maybe it's insignificant, but I would like to see if we can talk with probably Prazier about.
Something, something in this.
About, you know.
You also have to remember that his budget is approved by Department of Revenue.
Correct.
Well, let's still talk to him. Because it's still our general revenue money, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Something, something that's important to, to point out, and this has been a fun project with Accurate, Amy and, and her team.
Boy, it's stuck, isn't it?
Is the, thank you, Commissioner Oakley.
I was thinking, add valor.
Name told and that's good.
So, we started this when we first came on, the unfunded mandate project. And we're today in this budget coming up, we're thirteen million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars in unfunded mandates that come down from the state. And these unfunded mandates that come down from the state are truly, you know, those handcuff us quite a bit. So as we learn and understand, and this is across all, all departments, from the sheriff's office and you name it, every, all the unfunded mandates that our taxpayer has to pay for that come down from the state of Florida, thing is important as we understand these mandates and its impact to the taxpayer and it's, and, and how it impacts our ability to make taxing policy on our county, that we work with our delegation and talk with them as they're, you know, maybe there's an ability for them to tweak something during session. And if that were to happen, that's just as big of a win as getting an appropriation or, or, you know, good policy done. But, you know, almost fourteen million dollars this year, that, that's a game changer in some of our conversation.
This slide that's up here currently?
Oh.
Yeah, so bold and italicized things are state mandates for us to pay anything that is not bold or italicized is at the board's discretion.
Yeah, and so the half a million of discretionary spending, five hundred and five thousand is, is below it. But the thirteen-plus million in, in unfunded mandates is, I think, an important conversation that, that we start having with our delegation to see, especially with the conversation the state had about property taxes and how to fund things. I mean, they're the reason why we're spending almost fourteen mil and it keeps, seemingly keeps growing every year.
Commissioner, I'm going to get complaints online. They may not be able to hear you if you just please.
So.
To your point, um, I want to make sure, uh, Amy, did you receive the email that I sent to him about the hit to our budget from the reduction in the business tax receipts and is that accounted for in the budget?
Um, no, I don't think this one is accounted for yet.
So, and, and to your point, right, we, we have, we, we are, you know, structurally, you know, our, our expenses are, are higher than what our revenues are, are coming in. So, you know, top line removals. Again, you know, I think the question, you know, to your point, Commissioner, is, you know, if, if, if the board wants to make a reduction in the millage, it probably comes from reserves. I mean, that, that's really it.
Well, you're already, and you're already hitting the reserves.
We're already, we're already hitting it hard, so I'm.
You've got to be careful, you should, as you would.
I say no to that.
So, I, I just, again, I, that, that's, I just want to, want to, want to put that out there as, as just a statement. So, I, I, you know, just, this is, this has really been good conversation, I mean, for us and, and for the team and understanding and, you know, and having a transformational path forward is amazing. Um, and, and so I think, I think I've got enough guidance to, to, to bring some stuff back for trim. I don't, you know, Chair, however you want to continue to go, we, we can either talk more about this, but I can come up with some recommendations and thoughts on what that could look like, whether or not you want to adopt them. That, that's a whole nother, you know, whole nother discussion, but, you know, we, we will be responsive to that. So, that's.
Yeah, so I think it's been a great budget meeting. Any, any other?
We still have a few more things that we just wanted to cover in terms of capital, but that's a major discussion.
Yeah, how we get the courthouse, oh, the EOC. Okay.
All right, so we did, um, we did a deep dive into the general fund capital. And so here is looking at the rest of the capital through our other funding sources over the next five years. It is a one-point-seven billion dollar five-year plan. You'll remember, I'm sure, last year it was roughly a one-point-eight billion dollar plan, so pretty much maintaining course and speed from our capital investment standpoint. And in here, um, we've got some, like our solid waste, uh, expansion, that's built into here, Hudson Libraries built into here. We're looking at another fire station that's built into our five-year plan, Connerton District Park, a maintenance facility on the west for utilities and an environmental lab upgrade, just to, you know, point out some key projects coming up in the next five years. All right, and then, um, our robust transportation engineering capital program over the next five years. And so we have that broken out, um, by their different, we'll call them buckets, where they've got capacity projects, major maintenance, multimodal and pedestrian, safety intersection signals and streetlights and some of, um, the key capacity projects that they've got built into this five-year plan. We're looking at Bridge from Sunlake to Forty-One, estimated to start in Twenty-Six. Sunlake Boulevard, south of Wilton Way to Anchor Dune Drive, they're looking at a start in FY Twenty-Six as well. Uh, Rangeland Boulevard from Gattle, Gattle, Ga- Cattle, my goodness, Cattle Gap Trail to Bexley Village Drive, also slated to start in Twenty-Six. DeCubulus Road, Little to Town Center, slated to start in FY Twenty-Nine. And Shady Hills Road, Mary Giella Elementary School to Bosley, um, looks like that's slated to start in Twenty-Six from a design perspective.
Do you have, we don't have that in our.
Nope, I'll, I will send you all the details, but I just wanted to highlight some of the, some of the major ones in the plan.
Okay. Now, the toughie here, where's this bunny coming from?
Oh, she's a slide ahead of me.
Yep.
So, actually, we give them handouts.
All right, and so, um, long-term capital, where, uh, we really don't have a funding solution to date for. We know we've got a criminal courthouse we need to find a solution for, um, working through our Public Safety Operations Center. The sheriff needs a logistics building and, so I'll pause for discussion.
Yes, appreciate it.
No, I, I was, um, thinking, why don't we just, why don't we get with our delegation and see if they can get us started on getting money allocated, um, for a courthouse? I mean, it's a start.
Well, do they, do they, does the state help or the feds with the courthouse? No. They do for fiscally restrained counties, don't they?
I thought they didn't, I thought they didn't help with.
Get Ralph on microphone, please.
Yeah.
In the past, they have done construction, but there was backlash on that.
I'm talking just design or just like, and study anything.
And the courts have gone and to the delegation and they've heard them, but they've never perceived forward an, an offer to give that to the courts. Trust me, the courts are doing that as well, asking the delegation. We could try, but I doubt we'll see that.
And what about the piece of?
So we've, we've already, I'll, I'll answer that. So we've already gotten some federal money on that, on that piece of it. We actually have some federal money to, to do the design on it. You know, notwithstanding anything, we, we do have this, this DR money. And while there is a prohibition specifically against some of these things, we are, we haven't given up in trying to see if, if there's a way that we can, we can get DR dollars to, to potentially fund that. Uh, if that, if that were to fail, then, you know, you're, you're kind of looking at some big-ticket items that clearly would require debt. Uh, the, the question is, is how would you want to, you would want to go, go for that? You, you need a source, you need sort of a source to pledge. And your, your current half-cent sales tax and other recurring revenues probably aren't going to be enough to do that, that or you're going to over-laden those, those supplies. So, you know, this, this board has discussed, uh, potential referendums in terms of general obligation bonds, in which case that's where folks will agree to be taxed at a certain millage to pay that debt service off. It's, it's clearly an established need. It's, it's really a question for the board of how to do it. Impact fees are another, another, we could use the impact fees, I guess, to, to offset debt service, but that really still doesn't change your, your pledged sources. So, uh, it really comes down to.
Except you have no current impact fees that would fund any of them.
I think, and I think we should.
That is correct. Well, and, and, and then, and then I would need to talk with Jeff's team on, on recent changes in the law and how that, and how that would work to even establish a new impact fee. Tallahassee keeps moving the goalposts on that. And so it, it is, it, it may be challenging in order to hit that. Like anything, we're, we're becoming more sophisticated in our approach to, to seeking grants and, and trying to get outward sources of money to help, you know, fund our operations, our, our grants division and budget, as well as a number of our teams have really been making some steady progress on that front. But these are, these are big-ticket items that, quite honestly, you're, you're going to need a big way to fund it. And so, right now, it just kind of sits there on a slide until I can kind of maybe get some direction from this board. If you want to pursue a referendum, we can certainly.
What does that look like? What, what would a bond look like to cover, cover all three?
Expensive.
Well, you wouldn't.
I mean, we'd have to go out to the public.
You couldn't combine them as a, as a single entity, I don't really think.
Yeah, but we could, we could come up with an aggregate millage of what that would look like in terms of the debt, potential debt service. You know, if the board would like to see that before potentially pushing, pushing something else.
I don't know how else we're going to get there, personally.
Yeah, only way I'll support is if the voters want it.
Yeah, no, we'd have to put it to, to the voters, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's going, those are going to be GO.
Correct, they, they have to vote on this, yeah.
I mean, and we can't put it into one?
You have to, you'll have to legally, it's got to be for a specific purpose is what, what Jeff is referring to.
They all look like public safety to me.
Yeah, but there's, there's accountability and expenditure requirements that we, we don't need to get into it.
What's the impact on facility maintenance?
There would be an operational cost, I, we'll, we'll pitch an all-in number.
They all passed, all four.
They had a homestead referendum at the same time.
Yeah.
Okay, but ours, all ours.
All the GOs did.
But the sheriff's one was the low one.
The sheriff's was the lowest one.
Yeah, so.
Well, actually, it was the jail. It was not the sheriff's.
Okay.
Right.
But even if we got, if, if we put all three on there and we even just got one, it's okay.
Well, actually, I, I was just, uh, I was, I was notified by Chase that, you know, the sheriff logistics building may, may have some alternative funding, so that, that may be able to drop off this list. But you're, you're two big nuts relatively, or you're two oh-two and one fifty there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of here in, let the voters decide. We have an election coming up in Twenty-Six.
Yeah, let's test the waters. Why not?
I trust our citizens, I tell you.
Yeah.
They came through before and did a great job in what they supported. Uh, the board would have done it, I know the board would have done it, but we put it out to citizens and they all approved. Expansion in the jail, the libraries, the parks, all, all the different items that were on there were passed. They even had an item on there that gave them a break on their taxes by giving them an extra homestead exemption that did not pass.
Did not pass.
At that time.
I think we, we give great value in the.
We got great citizens, right? We need to take care of their money and, and do, do things the right way.
Chair.
Yeah.
But they do want the services, they do want the parks.
And it, and related to this conversation, uh, because it looks like parks will be, what, two budget cycles off? Do we want to look at a, a referendum for parks in the interim if we're going to put things on the ballot?
Well.
Because we're looking at two, two years, right, before we would potentially come up.
Are you saying a bond for parks?
Yeah, like we did in what year? And I think Keith's not here.
Well, that, that was for, that was for maintenance. And again, I, I don't know if I would, that, that's like, that's like seeking a mortgage to repair your roof or, or do, I mean, it's just deferred maintenance. I, I, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, that was kind of where.
I don't know what the language was in that.
Yeah, if you're talking one-time capital expenses for, for other parks, I mean, I think right now you've got a good revenue source with your impact fee that's really, you know, helping us move the needle, needle on that front. I'm, I'm not sure it's necessary at this point. I mean, it's, it's an idea worth exploring, but. I'm not sure it's necessary at this point, I mean, it's an idea worth exploring, but.
And I think it would kill the other two, because parks, people would, parks was the number one that got through there for the backlog of capital maintenance. So I just don't think a bond is a good way to pay for current maintenance. That was a one-time try and catch-up, although it didn't go all the way. But I think going for these two big-ticket items for bond would be great. And you know what? Maybe if it's wildly successful, and we've got some money, we have some money saved aside for that PSOC, we can move it if we get a bond for it.
Well, we're looking at options now, actually, so.
Yeah.
I'm good with those answers, this is fine.
That was good. Well, I think basically, we all are pretty much basically ideologically the same, so that helps, unlike some other counties. I think we're pretty consistent, pretty much together.
Amy, you want to bring us in for a landing?
Absolutely, all right. So we appreciate the board's thoughtful dialogue. We know we posed some tough questions for you all and some tough points of discussion, but it's important, right, that we hash that out and we get good direction. And so we've heard what we need to hear, and the next time that we are going to come back and hang out like this will be to set trim. So we went over our budget cycle, we talked about how we got to where we are, we talked about all of the pressures on our budget, what it's looking like so far, we got some clarification and guidance from you all, and thank you for a lovely morning, and my nickname.
All right, anything else for the good of the county?
No, just thank you, board members, this is, and Amy, and your team. I always enjoy budget time, and everybody in the crowd, thank you for your help and supporting with the backup that we need to make our decisions, so.
The sheriff's budget's so big, it's like a workout.
Keep hanging tough.
Look at all that detail.
The budget book. But we appreciate all the work that you guys did. Okay. Waitman did his closing, no enough, all right, then we are returned, thank you.